...this morning, I'm really pleased to say that, uh, Mayor Commander, um, this is Pat, passing the son of ladies in prayer.
Gracious Lord, we come. We come, first of all, for your sake. We thank you, Lord, for another beautiful day. For long we just bless your name. We honor you. We magnify your holy name. Then, Lord, we ask for forgiveness. Forgive us, Lord, Father, sin. The one we know and the one we do not follow. And we forgive those who have tried to attack against us. Now, Lord, we come. We come and we ask that you be with us, Lord. Continue to be with us, Lord. That you strengthen them individually and collectively, Lord. That they will make the decision that you see fit. You are God's daughter and they'll go as well. That you continue to bless Taylor County right now, Lord. That you can bless our clerk, Father. That you can bless our, our lawyers, bishops, administrators, Lord. These are ambroschs right now, Lord. Just keep them, Lord. Just keep them in your care right now. Then, Lord, we ask that you bless our children, Lord. And enable them to sit in their seats and learn. Till one day, Lord, they will sit in these seats. And, Lord, they won't be able to know unless they are calling through right now. So help them to listen and learn, Father. Then, Lord, we ask that you would bless those men and those women who are standing around the world in those blue and green uniforms protecting our freedom. So that we can have meetings such as this, Lord. Oh, Lord, just thank you right now. We bless your holy name, Father. Then, Lord, we truly ask for mercy. For real life, Lord, and mercy through our case. Then, Lord, we thank you for allowing us to all not even come out. We have got a little wind coming, Lord. And we thank you for your protection right now. And we ask for your continued protection right now, Lord, Jesus. That you can bless each commission of home, Father. Just take care of them right now. Take care of the citizens of Taylor County. Oh, Lord, give us more love and understanding of one another. Just keep us together, Lord Jesus. So we're here together. So we must work in love and respect one another. Just help us in Jesus' name, I pray. Amen?
Amen. Amen.
President Lee, to the House of the United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I thank you for that prayer. Come back and see us any time. I'd like to welcome everyone this morning to our meeting. Um, if you are long with them and would like to speak, come on down and join me in the assembly. You'll have the opportunity to come forward and speak for three minutes. Um, we'll go to item three, approval of the agenda, and the council changes. Uh, we're gonna move consent item 16. The board should consider approval of contracts for the leasing of two hundred and ninety-six plus or minus acres of property for the harvesting and sale of raw salmonella berries as a dividend by the county administrator. Two, we're gonna put it under county attorney items at twenty-one A. We're gonna add, um, another item. It will be twenty-two A. The board should consider the request from Hooked on Heroes to waive boat map fees October the fifth, twenty nineteen, and steam hatchy boat map as agenda by Commissioner Murphy. Are there any other additions or changes or anything else to today's agenda? Okay? If not, is there a motion to approve the draft of amendment?
Motion, please.
Okay, we have a two motion by Commissioner, uh, Moody, second by Commissioner Murphy. Is there a discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say a no. Motion, hear it. This complicit hearing, number four. The board are holding first of two public hearings that for this date at nine AM are as soon thereafter as possible to consider confidence of plan and measure PPA application nineteen dash oh one, conduct a first reading of the ordinance providing the amendment, and consider transmittal of the amendment to the Florida Department of Economic Development. Is there a motion to read this ordinance by title, Father?
Title. Number four.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioners Hill, second by Commissioner Page. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say a no. Motion, hear it. Here I am. Good morning.
Number four.
Yes, sir.
The ordinance of Taylor County, Lord, amending the Taylor County Compromising Plan which is relating to an amendment to the text and future land use plan map of the Taylor County Compromising Plan pursuant to an application CPA nineteen zero one by the Board of County Commissioners under the Amendment Procedures of Statutes and Section one fifty-three point three one six one through one fifty-three point three two four A Florida Statute as amended, providing for amending the text and future land use plan map of the Compromising Plan based upon an evaluation completed by the county to reflect changes in the state requirements pursuant to section one fifty-three, three one nine as Florida Statute says amended, providing severability, repealing all ordinance in conflict, and providing effective date.
Thank you. At this time, Lord, Dennis Brown will come and talk to us about this.
Well, first, I'd like to apologize for the lack of the law of the, of the items. Uh, this is, uh, a result of an evaluation appraisal that was done by the planning council under contract with the county. The board, uh, reviewed this a little over a year ago, and they, they then undertook the amendments resulting from that appraisal. They're known as the Evaluation and Appraisal Report based amendment. I included a summary sheet, uh, in the, in the package to try to cut through. Most of them were updating, uh, objectives, uh, references to F.D.O., uh, reference books, et cetera. There's, you know, nothing is being changed that were not required to be changed by Florida Statute. You have to do this every seven years or so, so that your complaint remains consistent with any changes in the Florida Statute and stuff like that in here. Uh, the planning board adopted resolution recommending that the board do approve or transmit the amendments. They would in turn be transmitted to Department of Economic Opportunity, and unless it's contested by them or some other state agencies, it would come back before this were for a final adoption. Are there any questions of me concerning the amendment?
Any questions from the board?
None here.
Well, thank you for that two hundred and seventy-six pages.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm sorry about that. I didn't have a choice.
I tried.
I didn't necessarily question just the catering going through this. Um, what I did was, I, I concentrated on the bold font.
Right.
Where it changed, uh, the names of things, and where it also, uh, changed some things in it, uh, on updating it made, to me, it seemed like it was taking some of the requirements out of the first, uh, or lack of a better term, really, um, or really hard to, for you to keep up with. Um, also, this is the, the first hearing. Um, we've got the passage on first reading, but it really doesn't pass it, is what I'm saying. It looks at you, Lord. Uh, ordinance that says pass on first reading, you know, kind of, you know, we put the date on there, it, it is passed that. In between the times of the first hearing and the second hearing, it would be my recommendation that you could see me through it again, just so if you have any questions, if any of your constituents have questions about it, um, you can try to answer it or someone call me and I'll try to answer it or call Daniel and we'll try to answer it because. And the reason I'm saying this is because if y'all recall with respect to some setback problems that we had before that we had to change, um, if we can avoid that happening again, that would be good for the county and good for the constituent. I'm not saying don't pass it, I'm just saying, just, you know, there's a lot to read and go through. I can set up a paper flipping on things that I looked at, and most of it, like I said, Danny, was just the, the bold.
I did, I did the same. That's how the summer, I did the summary.
Right, and I appreciate the summary. I thought that was real good, too.
Yeah, I tried.
I read it first.
When I said two hundred and thirty something pages, it was, and I, I'm like, there's no way.
I know, I first read it.
I went through about twenty pages, I'm like, mm.
Yes.
You lose where you're at.
Oh, we got to relax.
So you're saying we're gonna vote on this today?
Yeah.
And still have another public hearing?
Yeah, if you'll look at the ordinance, it says, um, and they do think a little bit differently than what I do, um, when, when I do the ordinance, but, but they say pass it on first reading, and then it says pass it duly, adopted in regular setting of the form voting, so that's the second, um, the second reading. So, um, I, I would say to them that you're, you're passing it on first reading, but you're having a second hearing and it's not duly, um, adopted until the second reading, um, if you, you know, you may change your mind going now and then, um, with regard to it. But it's something that's mandated, uh, that, you know, that we have to do with regard to the Compromising Plan. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's okay.
That's the way they, you know, they do it.
Yeah, right.
The primary thing that I'll need is the transmittal letter. That's what the planning council is requesting a copy of, and they will forward the amendment to, uh, the, uh...
And there may be comments coming back saying you need to change that, and that's the reason, that's the reason why there's, there's, uh, the two hearings on it. Um, you know, somebody, and, uh, I'll have to say somebody that's justifying their existence that will, uh, have some comments, that you would have.
Thank you.
All right, well, I'm glad that you have, uh, Tony here, we got Danny, we got Nelson and Flory from the planning council, and it also helps us, deals with understanding what's going on. If the planning council also has to bring this forward, and they have to pass it, and all the standards we use, uh, all eyes are left.
Yeah.
That's off the top of your head.
I, I...
You can't get too much out of it.
Somebody can get them down there somewhere. Okay, so this is, uh, the first of two public hearings, so at this time, um, uh, wasn't open to anyone in the public who wishes to come forward and speak, ask any questions or whatever you have to say. Okay? If there are no one here to speak, uh, are there any other questions, or any comments from the board? Okay? If not, is there a motion to pass only first reading?
Since I'm a representative, I'll make that motion. Since I'm a representative, I have an oath and responsibility to the planning council to this board, I will make that.
Sure, thank you.
I will make that.
Okay, so we have a motion to by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Murphy. Is there a discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
When I hear that, I hear you call it, okay.
Okay. Ladies and ladies?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
See, uh, that's a, go call the, you know. Thank you. Item five, the board should receive this from Taylor County closing map, the rolling and furrowing exposure that for this date at nine oh five AM are as soon thereafter as possible. Okay, a type that you left, give a list for the people who submitted a proposal. Uh, Kim, if it's somebody, the committee is Sam and Pink and Scott and I, only the planning members.
This is renewal of the, this, this is, um, re-advertise because the contract is in the, at the end of this month. The three years, the subject of three-year contract includes the mowing and fertilizer license. We've got two items of contract now, curb of fuel services.
They have seven years.
They did.
Number two.
And, uh, they have done a, a big job.
Okay, Kim, you got it here, a extra mowing cycle, do you want that to be in?
And then just right above that, there's a code.
Right above?
Yeah, right there, and then there's a code for fertilizer, and that's what you print it on.
Okay, the total for the mowing cycle is six thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty-four feet.
Did you tell me what?
That was, the first one on your list, green, nine feet. And the difference was six thousand? Six thousand three seventeen sixty-four. And the fertilizer is two thousand one sixteen.
That's four cycles. That's, that's, that's four mowings and two part of a rail.
Do you, and you want to take the list, or you want to?
Yes, and you just keep one in your envelope and give me the, the list.
Now, how big an area is this?
There's, uh, twenty-two, little twenty-two acres of mowing and a little over twenty-one acres of fertilizer. We don't authorize, uh, filter points, mass concrete services, or the on-site.
That being with some curbs, a few of them, which is, which is my fault. Curbs, curb of fuel services is, the one I was asking you, six thousand three seventeen sixty-four, it's one minute.
Yeah, all three. Error.
Okay, the maximum screen magnitude between Lake City. There it is, um, the mowing is five thousand one hundred dollars. That's the four cycles. The fertilizer is two cycles, and that total is five thousand five oh cycles.
And we'll just really just make sure that you're not overriding the cost of keys. Um, we do typically look at it as a total cost basis without consideration of the extra factors. So on face value, I'll say you've got ten versus a thousand. But we'll just make sure that they're putting it in order and, um, materialize the life of the country.
And you'll bring it back tomorrow next week, or maybe October the seventh?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, very good, thank you. We'll move to item number six.
I better respect, I'm glad.
The board should receive statements of qualification for Taylor County continuing contracts or engineering services that for this date at nine ten AM are as soon thereafter as possible.
These, uh, these two are like the previous ones in that there is a current contract that was expiring. Uh, it's been a five-year contract that we have used over the past five years for professional engineering services to supplement mine. Uh, we typically use them for the D and C stratified program. Uh, we have, this format allows us to use them for a local agency program, or you hear the L.A.P. program with D and C. I worked pretty extensively with D and C when, when we forced them the first time to get them in what they call a federal line, so on that, we said, we have all those looking at that required, so that we can use these on our L.A.P. programs without having to go through these issues. Your current contractors for this, or current firms for this are C.H.W. Unit and Two Barry Propeller.
There's none of them, I'll tell you.
Now, these are simply statements of qualification. These guys are telling you why they're, that's what it is. Um, the way the solicitation is structured, there's a selection, review selection committee, there's evaluating criteria, there's weighting, uh, and scores for each of those criteria. It is intended that the review committee, um, the way it's listed here, comprised of myself, uh, county administrator, county attorney, we will review those solicitations, evaluate them based on that ranking, shortlist them. If we feel there's a, a need for in-person presentations, we can request those. And then the expectation is that we will bring our recommendations for the person back to you guys to choose to confirm it, or, you know, I'm lost, I'm losing, I think that. And then if you confirm that, we move towards negotiation of contract terms.
Okay.
It's, it's a little easier way to make it less on our own, you know?
So we're just rescinding these, these segments today, we're not gonna vote on the hearing, and then just, that'll come later?
We won't require a vote until, if we follow the review committee process, we wouldn't require a vote until we bring it back and put it into you and saying that we suggest that you enter into a contract with firms, and you're not expect me to request that you enter into a contract that we, firm A and B. Uh, the reason being is, the one right after this is a C.E.I. with construction engineering inspection. D and C does not allow you now to have a single job and have the same two firms, one designing and one inspection. They require that you not allow fox guarding and all this, and so we have to have more than one. So obviously, if we had a single design, if we had a single firm for design, that's all they would be able to do, and if we only did one for C.E.I., I'd be the same one every time. Firms don't always have the same strengths and weaknesses, so it makes it a little bit easier if we can have several choose firms, or design as well as inspection, which kind of makes them faster. And we try to spread the wealth with, I'll give you this one, 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 you know, fairly indiscriminately, but it's nice to have the luxury of multiple firms, which is a better approach.
Are there any questions from the board? Okay, if not, then we're gonna go to item number...
Think she needs to read the list, yeah.
Okay, okay. Yes, the first one is Mark Leader and Associate from Coffee Bar.
And three appearances, the, the back of the first farm that's the name of the lady.
The second one is the sign on your list, Kimberly Horn, and she's out, thank you, Lord.
It's making it easier to vote some people, all of them right now. I will retrieve all of your, your, um, um, all of them.
It's not a change of policy?
You can keep everybody counted.
The next one is C.H.W., Professional Consultant from Lockwood, Lord. The next one is George, an Associate Consulting Engineer from Tom Hanks. The next one's from Mark McDonald, who may keep that a while. And the last one is Northwater Professional Services in Lake City. Now, we'll move to item number seven, the board should receive technical qualifications. That's the two that you tell the county to continue contracts with the sub-commissionary inspection PPA services that for this date at nine fifteen AM are as soon thereafter as possible.
Yeah, this, this one is identical to the previous one with the inspection, that's what the services, it's just, it's for inspection services, purposeful design.
This is the first one on your list, is K.C.C.F. out of Tom Hanks. The next one is C.H.W., Professional Consultant from Lockwood, Lord. The next one is R.S.N.A. Selective.
Depending on the results of the review, I would say if the earlier, we could possibly come back at the second meeting in October, but if we were to move toward presentations, that might pick up to, moving.
Next one. So, I'll have to go with...
He's one of the, he's one of the, that's him.
The next one is T.R.C. Engineers Incorporated, and they are from Lockwood. The last one is Northwater Professional Services in Lake City. If that's the only one, do you want to come back and, and you don't wish them in October expecting?
I, I would expect we would do both of them, have to make the recommendations at the same meeting. Um, the two contracts kind of follow in concert with each other because of the local activity. So I would say the earliest is, is the second one, October, but it's not beyond the realm of reason for the first one in November, depending on presentation wise. We've got three schedules to deal with, plus all days.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Next are the consent items, and we have moved, uh, fourteen to, um, uh, twenty-one A, so that would be items eight through thirteen. And before I asked for a motion on, uh, number nine, um, concerning getting a purpose, I read through that, um, of course, it said it says A is for surveying it's a thousand six hundred and forty dollars, and, um, have we, at this time, a funding source for that?
No, that's the only reason that I, I was kind of, you know, we always hopeful that we can move it into consent just because of simplicity, but that's the one ambiguity that's in this, is that, I know we've discussed it multiple times, but we haven't established that direction on how we cover the costs of it. You know, there's always... You know, there's always the first thing off, my mind would be, you could focus on that district's cost under, or elevate that a little more, you could go to the common account, uh, for secondary real savings, or three or four.
You can use those accounts for land acquisition.
I would say you would use it for, it was the right away acquisition associated with infrastructure, and so the most lady on your left told me that's wrong, I would say it's a purpose.
Now, we talked about, or may on, or may on your right.
Yes, I, I would say it's a directly associated cost. It's not as buying a parcel of land, it's you're buying a corridor associated with a roof, is what I would say.
Sounds appropriate, kind of thing.
I know if I were to go through and establish cost, like we did with, uh, economic development transportation fund with D O T, so, you know, there's sort of right away line up, you know, so it's, that is an inherent, um, component of that rhythm, is what I mean. If I needed more right away because of an inadequate wish, I wouldn't bat an eye if you didn't let me, I may be wrong, but I wouldn't.
So, the, the next, uh, phase B, within B, was it engineering and?
Yes, ma'am, and it was broken into the two phases, um, simply because we want to let go of the initial one, to establish what it is, the actual footprint, see if we can complete the negotiations with the effective landlord before we take and commit ourselves to the actual collection of information to do the design. We don't have to give the design information upfront, we just need to know the physical footprint to say, I have affected X square feet of your property, can we move towards a con, uh, an acquisition that allows us to pay in front of them?
I understand.
So, kind of, don't over commit ourselves to it first.
Makes sense to me.
Now, if we utilize, probably sort of, you've identified for us, can, can Academy and Reivers, would be seeking them?
Uh, I would refer to the administration because, I was in the press, and I, I'll offer, I'll offer to administration.
I don't believe so, because the, the, as far as road improvements that we've identified with the SOR Act funding, it's more focused on dirt to paved roads, so I'm not, I'm not sure we could utilize those funds, but I can double check on this particular project and see if that's, if that's a potential source, but hasn't, hasn't D O T committed to draft or stop funding for the construction? If they now we acquired the property, then D O T has committed to the construction funding.
Yes, we, we are obligated that if we acquire the right away, they will assist the funding of the agreement, so we can't reach out to them to, for funding to purchase the property, that's, that's on us, but I, I wasn't quite sure about the SOR Act funding.
Well, I, I would say that would be when, when we met with that D O T and reviewed the history of that, um, that they are immediately more willing to help us with that.
That, that'll definitely be the lion's share of the expense.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, thank you. And here's another, the other comment, that's not, the other, the other comment that I wanted to make on the consent item, was, was, uh, number ten, concerning the pest control services, and, you know, I went back and I looked at that and I'm just very sorry that we could not use a local vendor, and has the, has the numbers been, you know, a little bit close now, even to the two hundred mark, or maybe a little more, I would have felt okay about going with a, a local vendor, but the, uh, different, the, uh, the differential between them was just too great, I'm just real sorry we could not use a local, a local vendor. Okay, um, without me in place, is there, anybody still have any questions about the consent, okay, uh, is there a motion to adopt eight through thirteen of consent items?
Motion, sir.
Okay, uh, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sign, sign, motion carries. On through the audit number fifteen, Tom Donkey, by official officer, got this a warrant held, to appear to be subject to medical services, E M S coverage, good morning.
Good morning, good morning. We don't have a C I L, we might get mad.
Oh, sorry, not bad, oh, that's, that's bad, huh?
Um, I think primarily, we were here to talk about what we had in, in Dean Hatch and Ben over the other day, where we didn't have any coverage. We currently have two paramedics that have left over the last month and a half that were in Dean Hatch, um, we have another one that is based primarily here, that's been out on work in Congress about two or three weeks right now, and we have another one that was recently involved in a situation where, um, the ambulance was going down the road, sirens and everything on, somebody pulled out in front of it, it did result in an accident, but the paramedic was in the back and was working with patients, he slammed into the, uh, the wall of the ambulance, and was, had about eighteen pieces on the forehead and black arms, we hope she will be back this week, which should help. We pretty much covered everything for the rest of the month and working on, on that. Uh, hopefully, the one bus, a county employee that was in the accident, will be back. We've also looked at doubling what we're paying to cover those ships, their twenty-four hour ships, two twenty-four hour ships, for two days, so it's forty hours, so we're working very hard to get that, that ship covered and, and keep that covered down there. Um, but we, you know, um, some, we do have, and it's not uncommon for some of the paramedics to work full-time here and on full-time others, that's what's going on, and we don't have a policy that allows us to study, you know, we're first, first choice, so we, we're trying to do that, and our, our, our corrections have been working, working our shift down there to, to cover that.
Okay, so are you saying again, that Dean Hatch, we have an ambulance and we have coverage?
Yes.
All the time?
Uh, as was today, we should have coverage moving forward, we'll do everything. If we don't, if we don't, or have a problem, I will let you know right away, and that's what happened the other day, that the, the paramedic called in, and we had the, we had worked with Dan, and that a little bit, perhaps, potentially, the, the paramedic's cover, cover that for me to, now, when, we, we also have, um, an ambulance ready to go down there, and we'll send one down there, and we do have, you know, what does occur down there is, we do quite a few transfers to Gainesville, a lot of the population would like to transfer to Gainesville, so when that ambulance goes to Gainesville, that ambulance is generally out for a minimum of five hours, and the transport time, what they call wall time, you know, for them to get the patient in, ambulance applies itself, so the ambulance, one of the ambulances is on the alert, uh, here to respond down there, in case we will end it down there, it depends on whether or not we're doing a lot of transfers up here.
But it, it, my recommendation is, and I, I may be wrong, but I thought that two, three, or four, five years ago, I can't remember now, that we added an additional hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year for y'all to give us coverage in Dean Hatch.
Right, and we have, we basically, I mean, so this recent, this last month, with having, you know, three employees out, we, we've covered Dean Hatch, we do cover it every day. It was this month where we had a couple of situations where being down, well, three and now four, um, we've had trouble, you know, we've had to work so hard to get a paramedic on, on call.
What's your chances of replacing these people, and how long is it going to take?
Well, it, it, it takes, um, we're out there in the market, we have, we do have, um, we've got one application for the one, so, please, we'll, we'll interview that one. Um, it can take anywhere from a month or two to replace, replace the paramedic.
Yeah, I heard that they're not in abundance.
They're not in abundance, we are finding of all the small counties, um, we've brought our salary up a little bit, we're in the, in the range, but we also compete with the big services, um, like Centurys that operate in my city, and they're, we don't understand their payment, like, twenty to twenty-five dollars an hour for paramedics over here to do nothing, the transfers are not running. I think the base rate for sham, which I've got today, was seventeen or eighteen dollars for a paramedic, so they're a good dollar, if we hire them, or, or we don't.
Do you, do you have, um, a temporary agency that someone that you could employ to, to bring some people in?
No, we, we've talked to the, the ambulance services, that they really don't, don't, you know, the, the, they don't really, really do that kind of thing. We're, what, what we're facing is what, every one of the four or five small counties, you know, basically, um, what I've seen in the last three years, um, our paramedic moves one county to the next county and back, and then with Leon County, as close as they are, they're paying significantly higher salaries, and, and I have talked to, um, the, the, um, the director of Leon County about whether the possibility, whether or not they could help us out a little bit, we hadn't carried that in further than our plan on doing, doing that, I've sort of, like, with him, he's actually the chairman of the state, in that council, and I've sort of on that council, the possibility, uh, and quite frankly, what I've found is, the small counties in, in the state, um, have a tremendous, a hard time, especially with private services and not the large, large services they kind of have. Um, we've kind of asked out there what the cost of, uh, what the larger services, the independent services, and they, they kind of said that we'd be in, that the cost to come in and run first here probably would be a shit of a dollar, and, and we're, we're out right now, we're in about one point four, one point five, and, you know, that's, because they have built into their budgets capitalizations and, and, and high salaries, and, and, it's just a tough situation, we're, we're, every day, we're maneuvering through it, I had that fact, is, uh, for our new director is working, he's worked at least two, if not three shifts, it's not down to forty hours, takes a day off in his path.
If you're not careful, you fall way through.
Yeah, we had that issue several months ago.
Yeah, you know, just seeing what, what issue I've had, I know, right?
It, it, it is.
And, you know, for us, we're responsible, we're the, the safety and the locker of our citizens, and then we pay for that total, and I guess you might be surprised, that we are asked to use, uh, some of our people, does that put you short there? You know, I've been talking to the-
What we're doing, what we're doing right now is similar to what we're doing at, um, if they arrive and they transfer something like that, if the ambulance call comes in, our firefighters are dual training, E and G, dual paramedics, so they first respond, get on scene, and start providing agents, so the ambulance can get there.
So, then they have to wait till I don't get there.
But we don't do any transfer service, we don't transport at all, we just do on scene medical care and field, and, and.
And then it's very difficult, I'm sure, in the last month, we didn't get it. Dixie County provides any, Dixie County does, does offer services, um, to, uh-
They don't have a station, nothing.
They don't, they have a station across the river, but it's limestone, they haven't had any ambulance in a, I think they have a fire truck there, Dan.
Um, Dana, is a, is a longer ambulance station, or, or a longer fire station?
Fire station.
The closest E M S sta- station is Crofton.
Crofton, now, they do, they will, we're on transfer, or, and we have, you know, we're, we're transferring up here, they will respond for us, just like we respond quite often, probably more across the river in the region, Dixie County to, to respond, um, because we are, we are closer, so we're not, we're not providing folks to that house. We're five minutes maybe away from a lot of places down there, and, um, so there is a, there is a cooperative agreement with, with Dixie County. Um, the worst situation, they, they're, I'm probably, just a touch less than I already want to come up here.
It's, it's, it's very concerning, if somebody, you know, has a stroke, minutes count, if they have a ruptured spleen, minutes count.
Yeah, in, in, in case of a stroke, um, even when we're down in the area, if, if it's intensive or stroke, definitely stroke, um, quite often, we will call in a shaman there and they'll respond.
Shaman there?
Shaman there, which I'll say helicopter, that's, that's another alternative we have down there, which, you know, eliminates, um, there's no, they transport, but they, they can be in Gainesville in twenty minutes to town, out in the, in the field, do virtually everything we can do on the ground down there to fill the distance.
Just to clarify that too, but there's still a transport to an L Z, so if we did call a helicopter, say they're at your house and they're having a stroke, we still have to transport them to an L Z or, they can, can, just land it in, whatever, it's gonna be different.
Now, for, for us, uh, employees, you've got the, uh, medical director?
We get medical directors from the hospital, from the, from the-
And the, the, um, the other, um, requirement, what is it, uh, the, um?
If you're providing A L S care, you have to have an A L S license.
We don't, we don't operate A L S, we also operate a, a B L S, passing, E and G license.
Tec- technically, you're supposed to have a B L S license to do that, so.
A B L S?
Yeah.
B L S?
Yeah, well, we, we have both, we have both B L S, uh, E and G and B L S.
The hospital does, but the county doesn't have a license, so if the county's providing care, you're supposed to have a license.
Or because we're not, we're not the medical agency, we are just there at a first responder level, that's, that's how, how, how we operate, it's because we, when, we do a hospital in ninety, that's when, just like Marty was saying, that's one of the licensing, I mean, the transfers, the hospitals, the overall, and, uh, ours is a, a first responder, like, you know, good Samaritan, we're trying to help out, help until that service can, can be provided by now.
Any, any questions from the board?
Yeah, you know, the new one is, uh, is, you know, when we do leave these, that's sort of sometimes a uncoverment, in the sense that an ambulance, not there for recovery or, or.
Any, any questions from the, uh, anybody on your own here? Okay, I'm, I'm just wondering, do we need to workshop this, and what services, do what options we have?
What do we need to do, or what can we, what can we guess we do in order to help you out down there?
Um, I don't think, in the current situation, that there's not much we can do, we're losing its salaries, and, I mean, today I offered double time for many paramedics, I mean, we do have, we have a couple that have left us in one of the worst places that are on flex, but their flex rate is not low, so we, we, we increase that flex rate, and that does, the double time, we could be on time to, and, basically, one guy is working two shifts together, which means, and, and we, here, we have eight of those times, and also, every, you know, the twenty-four hour shift, every time they work two shifts, there's an hour of overtime, there's involved, and generally, we do, we have a good, there are more overtime than that, based on, somebody said that we're sending somebody else that will work the ambulance on foot tomorrow.
Okay, have we, we need kind of payment plans for the hospitals to pay our county employees if they are working?
We're not covering it. Huh? We're not, we haven't covered-
It's our normal, normal staff.
No, it's normal staff.
Okay.
Um, do you need to be working? Um, have you compared the cost of the overtime, double, now, versus raising your hourly rate thing? We have, and it's, um, it's, um, it's a, it's a kind of a mixed, mixed bag in there, you know, um, you know, we, we went back and looked at the numbers, like I said, yesterday, and ran through numbers, um, to be honest, um, if we look at, at the current contract, we all provide four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, so, and I think when Dean Hatch came on, that, um, the salary was just one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, we, we just ran numbers without any overtime yesterday, it just, um, and salary expenses without the overtime, the cost is two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars a year down there. Um, one of the problems that we have down there, when you look at it, is the bill or run are, are relatively small, small down there, they're, um, they're about two hundred eighty-five, four hundred and seventy-five. A lot of what we do is respond to calls that don't result in transportation, and they call, they, they call, uh, they don't feel good, so, like, probably three out of four to four out of five-
So like probably three out of four to four out of five calls that we do are basically responding to the house. They're not anything, I mean, if we do think they need to be transported, they don't. So, um, from a, from a revenue standpoint, it doesn't, it doesn't produce a significant amount of, of revenue down there. Um, we, we looked at billable calls for us down there for the last fiscal year and we only, we only collected about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. About four hundred and eighteen thousand we have as on, on billable calls. So, um, it's, it's, it's a tough coast to run, no matter who and run, run it, it's, you know, the raw numbers we figure, it probably is, it probably, if we're supplementing that by about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, then it would be that good. Anything like that. So, um, it's, it's a very, it's, it's, it's a small volume of what we do. It also takes a lot more because most of the transport are on distance or, or, uh, I can't see.
If I'm wrong, we need coverage down there.
Well, you said billable. You actually ran a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in. But it costs us how much to run?
Uh, the hundred and fifty thousand was the county provided to, to proof with, when you added C N H in. Okay. You, you provided another hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, in, for, for for that particular animal. The billable runs are about, are four hundred and seven, you know, four seventy-five last year. We have, or the total run is four seventy-five, two hundred and eighty-five were billable, there's about a hundred and ninety runs that, that we ran that are not, not, not billable. And then we do, and then probably we get a lot of people walk up and, and act as if it's the kind of, the kind of, the kind of down there. From a, from a revenue stream, it, it doesn't cover the, 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 down there, if you look at it, it's individualized. Um, the volume in, uh, care is basically a very, very even volume across the, the region. Cause we do, we have a lot more runs, we have a lot, a lot of transport.
I was talking to someone, I don't remember who it was, but, um, they said that, um, some of these companies that provide animal service, that they, they go after their running. So, that, that how, how, um, how hard do y'all try to get payments?
We try.
How do you really get there?
We, we, we try very hard, um, you know, um, it's, it's relatively small now. And correct me if it's wrong, we looked at this, it wasn't going out of running in a hospital, but there's no new laws for in our, in the county that, that.
County, you know, um, which, uh, you know, uh, we, we, we actually did analysis on the cost of the pot and whatever and not doing. Doing, and, and, and the cost is way greater than the cost. Well, many years ago, um, I contracted with the hospital, I mean, it's a long time, it's like four years ago. Maybe longer for our, our small things for the hospital, um, or animal services and animal services. Uh, and what I did was, the first thing I did was, I was trying to go the letter to the, um, the dad or the lack of a letter to him. And just to remember what I did, about twenty-five bucks to send a letter, um, and I got some response from, from him. Um, and then, uh, we did a couple to small things that we, we, you know, we collected some. But then there was the change in the administration, um, they decided they didn't want to do it because, um, I, I didn't do it anymore. Um, you know, I really don't know, like I said, I, I was trying to do it as cheaply as possible from my standpoint, where, you know, if you're gonna do it, you got to show that you're, um, doing a service plus here, uh, justifying it by making money on it or you're putting on a client, um, you know, examples are, that I've seen is like the helicopter bills just after a monocle. You know, I mean, one flight for like eighteen thousand dollars or something like that, um, just to get that. Um, but, uh, I, I do get paid some interest on it.
Right, we get paid some interest, um, basically, that's a, you're so, uh, there's helping the duckles, everybody's helping the duckles. Something like that. And, um, you know, um, how you got sent it, but a significant number of runs down there or, or, or not having it. They just have insurance, something like that.
Okay, now, helicopter, so, uh, mention, now they, uh, along with all of them, they're, they're going, and so, and I'm sure that they transport a lot of the same people that, that y'all do. So how are they able to make it and be successful and you're having all this trouble?
Well, they, they'll probably get, uh, helicopter transport's probably the lowest they'll get paid is two to three thousand, uh, seven to eight thousand dollars on a chemo. So.
But their cost to operate, it's like, right?
Right, and that's within the, the breaking, but they do, do that. I mean, it's not that we don't work these bills and do them, it's that, that, um, we're very hard to collect from a lot of people. And, um, especially the transfers, where we have, um, a lot of expense, um, of the, 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 the transfers are not, not, the, the, the ground transfers are not, not easy. You know, we, we, we do a transport from C N H to the gate or whatever, to one quarter, to Inverly to Fortham, and San. Um, that's a full tank of fuel, which is probably for around a hundred dollars, five hours of, of two people later services. So they're fairly expensive to do and, and, and remarking them. You know, you get a few, like miles and miles, it's not really equivalent to a helicopter.
But, but not yet, you're, you're assuming that you just don't have the people.
We, we're working on getting and, um, we want, I think once we, we'll be more stable as soon as the one comes back that, was, and you have them the other day. And hopefully we'll have another one, you know, and some of the lighters we connected and working on that stuff. Um, you know, we, and, and the other two, the, the two that's left were in C N H, it's kind of, I mean, we're stable. And that's, I kind of pulled that out, maybe a little bit harder, but that's what we're, we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. County staff items number sixteen. The board can consider approval of department transportation small county road assistance program on the scrap. Reunification agreement to reconstruct and restore the city on all roads. An adoption of resolution authorizing execution by the chair of the board of county commissioners as intended by the county engineer. Um, is there a motion to read this resolution by Tom Longwood?
I move.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hipps, second by Commissioner Murphy, all in favor of saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed same time, motion carries.
I want to be the first to go on reading this title. Peter Island Road Scrap Agreement, signature authorization, essentially it's just giving that, like, the chairperson authorization.
But I thought, but it has a title.
I said Peter Island Road Scrap Agreement.
Yes, sir, it's called, they wouldn't get a sore throat, but it has one.
Yeah, I heard.
I have learned.
Yes, sir.
Uh, this is obviously another one that is, um, from the priority list and prior year that we submitted. It's finally rolled around to the funding cycle of D O P. They provided this, uh, this the other day. And I would just make one comment with respect to the, um, the signature on this. Once the resolution is passed, we will still follow that electronic signature format. So they'll send us an email, I'll reassign it to you, we'll upload the resolution, um, virtually. We still want you to do a hard, hard signing, but ultimately you will still do the electronic signature.
Well, you know, you and I talked about the electronics one and, um, you have to get them to send it to you instead of me. Can, can we go ahead and do that?
Um, yes, ma'am, I think, I think it would be this body's responsibility to, um, I mean, I guess it would be part of the resolution that we're looking for the signature. Cause that's what we're looking at is, they need some documentation that says the person signing has the right to sign it. So I, I would say the resolution will have to be provided to where it will be a county engineer, which is the chairperson.
Well, not clear on, um, would be that, um, the resolution, um, should be signed by the chair. The resolution.
I, I don't disagree with that, but then the verbiage in it was, was assigned, so the signature authority to the county.
Yeah, that's on it.
Yeah, yes, sir. Yeah, they moved to electronic signature format instead of the, passing back electronic.
So, we would change the resolution to say, um, that, the, uh, am I understanding correctly, is the saying that, uh, the resolution would give the engineer the party's, uh, the, the, the contract on the letter term?
No, the electronic signature.
Okay.
Talking about, I don't, I, I don't necessarily want to do it on this one the whole way up. But in the future, um, if we could have it to reflect that, you know, he, it comes to him. He might as well sign it, then I'll sign, you know, sign the hard copy resolution.
Okay, all right.
If we can do that.
Yeah, the process is only, they send it to me.
Yeah.
And I let them know we're not going to be submitting it before the board, cause they'll ask me, when do you think you give it through? And I'll say, I'm presenting it on a sudden subject day. And then I would typically respond back when I get it signed, I send them a handwriting of it and say, look, it's, I usually say the original is coming in the mail. Now I just tell them, hey, it's been executed, I'll get with the chairman to have the electronic signature completed. That's the process on my end. And what she's saying is in the paragraph there in the resolution, instead of saying that the chairperson, the engineer is authorized, uh, but yes, she still signs the resolution and that's the work.
And then it's the process though.
And I can do it here on out, if that's the way you like, we'll be doing it too the same way. Um, so we use nine of them electronically and then I'll change the verbiage and subsequent money for them to first like in the next form, right? You'll, they'll come and afford you guys to have the signed resolution anyway.
Yeah, yeah, it's just, it was, just speaking for.
Yeah, so I have to reassign it to you.
Yeah. Um, okay. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution? Okay, motion by Commissioner Murphy, second by Commissioner Payne, any further discussion? If not, all in favor of saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed same time, motion carries. Okay, item seventeen, the board can consider approval of Florida Department of Transportation and D O P small county road assistance program. We have a personal agreement to reconstruct and reconstruct the smaller roads, D R three fifty-nine A. An adoption of resolution authorizing execution by the chair of the board of county commissioners as intended by the county engineer. The motion to re, to read the resolution by Tom Longwood.
Aye.
The prior one, they didn't approve the re, the first agreement, they did not approve it.
I think they did approve.
Got back to the, 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 I know. Okay, going back to sixteen, is there a motion to, uh, approve the agreement?
Aye.
Motion by Commissioner, yep, second by Commissioner Murphy, all in favor of saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed same time, motion carries. And we're back in seventeen, um, we have a motion to second to read by, um, Tom Longwood.
Water Road Scrap Agreement, signature authorization.
Thank you.
I'm making longer than I just, no, no, that's fine. I mean, I'm going to clear it for you, you're always.
And is there a motion to adopt the resolution? I don't think you got a motion to, 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 to read it, so I brought that up back here. If you get, if you get your motion, that can only read.
I was thinking, I was still thinking of, if you, if you approve the resolution, which says it authorizes the chairperson to sign the agreement, is the other, is it, is it moot issues because you're, you're authorizing it?
Well, because the agreement's first and the resolution's second on that.
That's what I didn't think.
Y'all changed it so the resolution's first and then you have to approve the agreement.
I think it was a motion and a second to read it by title, but I don't ever think it was a vote on it.
Okay, do you have a motion to read it? Do, do you want it to vote on it?
I don't think so, I didn't hear one. So I'm going to go to the last today. All in favor of saying aye.
Yeah.
And I'm going to read it again a little bit, water road, you have a agreement, signature authorization.
Okay.
And then you get a motion to, uh, for the.
Agreement.
For the agreement.
Okay, is there a motion for the agreement?
I'll make one tomorrow. I'm saying.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Murphy, second by Commissioner Payne, all in favor of saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed same time, motion carries.
May I ask a question?
Okay.
Now, this is the second part.
This is about, uh, of the.
Now, we all get a, been approved from the first part.
That's correct, so this, we had from U S nineteen up to three and fourteen, this is, uh, yeah, separate the funding cycle. This is about all of the hairs and blue roots, so we'll, we'll drive it all. That's correct.
Okay, we got a making second to comment for you, and you got the agreement, now the resolution has to be adopted.
I move the resolution. That's it.
Okay, we must have a motion and a second, all in favor of saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed same time, motion carries. What else can I add up here? Um, okay, listen, the people out there who hate some tanners, hate some tanners, I'm worried they're going to be.
Well, I hope, I hope they bring that anticipation to the table when we ask them for the proper right of way to cut that.
Are you having issues?
Yeah, I have to remember there is, that is just a moderated road with fences on both sides, just outside of that. Um, the way that you got a little bit of a hill and a little bit of a valley and then a right-hand turn. And that's where the low points need to be to be able to dispose of that. Because of that, some of your limits of deterrence gets out to sixty feet. So I laid it out as our minimum L D R right of way of sixty feet. That's what I'm going to pitch. And if, if they kick back and say no, then that's where you can say, we came to do it or not do it.
Yeah, okay. Fair enough, thank you. And they came, the board can consider approval installation of a vehicle style and rescue equipment that came in each year as part of the responsible tier initiative as intended by Victor Blanco, County Police Agent. So Victor is not here and, um, if you have any questions, I will listen to answer or we can table this until the next meeting. Whatever's left of the board. Now, the packet was pretty soft and plain to avoid, um, this is at no cost to the county and it's something coordinated through, um, University of Florida Marine and all rescue groups. And I know they've been more, um, I notice they've been quite active in our area recently as far as providing training for, um, animal rescue, that the whales, hurtles, um, species that is that. So, I, I think this is obviously been, you know, part of that trend to provide marine animal rescue in our area.
Yeah, just a question, because as part of my army corps permit, I was required to post, uh, sea turtles, saucers, and, uh, I forget the third one, but I have those, those information blocks already posted at the pavilion and the beginning of the pier.
This would also provide rescue equipment and a container for filaments. So, we may be able to coordinate with, with U S as far as additional signage.
Unless it's been removed, there was a, there was an existing, um, fishing line or monofilament collection point at the beginning of P R M.
There's another piece of equipment, I believe they are, um, installing a net that you can use for rescue. So, um, we, do you see, would you compare the signage to make sure it doesn't contradict, because I think this is absolutely.
Maybe not necessarily if it contradicts, but maybe what's there is already sufficient to achieve their objective, given that it was a federal mandate that I put it there. That was, that was all I was resentful of. I mean, it's a song, you know, sign, sign, there were signs, there's, there's to be two men. I would say you could approve it, but that it's, they're not duplicative of the existing signage.
Go ahead and approve. I'll move it. I'll move it.
I know we need to work with the county.
Yeah, county engineer and take a lunch more together.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner, yep, the second. Second by Commissioner Murphy, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time, motion carries. General Business, number nineteen, the board should consider an appalorn property tax exemption application for immediate medical and aesthetic clinics as requested by the Taylor County Development Authority PCD. And since medical at the last meeting, we actually tabled this application, so we could obtain some more information from the applicant. There was a question about the number of jobs that would be provided. I did speak with the applicant and he indicated to me that the business plan, including hiring of three employees within six months, with a hopes of hiring a total of six within a year, after a two-year period, the number of employees could reach ten. Another item that I worked with the PCD attorney, Ray Carter, was an actual flow chart. This could help with the decision-making process. So we have completed the flow chart and attempted to answer each consideration as best as we could. Now, just one correction, I would say, on the application, this is represented as a targeted industry business. But upon review from Enterprise Florida, I think that's questionable. I don't, I don't, it does not appear to need those qualifications. So it is the pleasure of the board whether to grant this exemption. You, even though our ordinance and its statute mentions a period of up to ten years, if the board decides to grant an exemption, it does not have to be for the full ten years, it is, it is the pleasure of the board. Okay, first of all, they're only going to have three employees for six months and then maybe, from what I read, maybe possibly six in one year. So that right there doesn't meet the ten employees.
Got me ten.
We need two. And if it doesn't meet the, if it's not a targeted industry, so, any other, so, is there comments?
It's not meeting the criteria.
Well, let, let me just, why is it criteria is that, and that, this is within our ordinance, is that a new business is located within Enterprise, which is the entire Taylor County, that that is one of the qualifiers. It's not, I don't, and Connor, if you may, if you want to help me on this. I believe the ordinance states up ten, it's, it's this, 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 this. So any, to be quite honest, and I think the PCD, if this is a consideration, any new business that is located in Taylor County could apply to this exemption. Could apply, but that doesn't mean that we're going to.
No, you're not.
Approve it when it doesn't meet the criteria that we want.
Correct.
Okay, absolutely. Okay, um, is there anybody in the room that are making a motion to grant this exemption? That's, um, I'm twenty. The board should consider appointing one member to the Big Bend Water and Flowing Water Breakers for a two-year term as requested by Mark Reddick, general manager. And there were two applicants, Charlie Norwood and Sam Ridgeway. Um, but we have, um.
We have ballots.
We have ballots.
The Ds.
I would like to say too that these ballots are kept by a clerk and their public record. So if you, anyone wishes to look at them at the end of this meeting, or go to my office, they may do so. And of course, number one is the first story, and two is the second.
I'll read the one. On the Ds, it's not on your ballot. It's probably not a good one.
I've got mine on the bottom line.
Uh, I was going to get it wrong. I was going to get it tall. I got what you're trying to do. If you only left me the tall.
We'll look along and then let us know when you, when you're ready to come out, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, county attorney, all, twenty-one. No, we've got to go back to twenty-eight, which is.
It's on the ballot. It's on the ballot.
Yeah, twenty-eight, the board should consider your question hooked on here, to claim the boat map, state of October the sixth, twenty nineteen, that's the next to boat map, as is then about Commissioner Murphy. It goes by.
Yes, ma'am. I've got a old call yesterday, it's about seventeen, it was a little late. They didn't know what they should be having to, they had her flip over last year. They want to ask the county to wait, so we have to pass it. Last year they only used seventeen, and they were expecting to, you know, all that. What is due for a better, there's some elderly veterans associated with this that are in nursing homes, but don't ask him. And they say, long, you're long, you're applying to train, so you don't go. The first one wants to get in with the, that is, they're tripping down on their promise.
Well, you know, and I'm, what I can say, for your mildly concerned, well, it's more than twenty show up, basically getting started.
I mean, that is correct. I'm a little about that. It is the volume and frequency, and they say, yes. So we should expect them to reach a two now.
I don't want anybody to say that. You want to make that motion?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. I think it's a place that we consider. I'll let.
We've got a motion by Commissioner Murphy, second by Commissioner Page, any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time, motion carries.
A quick question I have is distribution of the past, is that going to be served off?
We didn't do it like this. She never asked for this. We did it here.
Okay, so now that we are, where do we collect the past?
I don't know. I'm going to see who will be doing it.
How come you don't, or we can have all the chairs, or I think they did that last year.
I don't know what we did last year, but before I did them on, did the all paper, and I think I was asking them.
Would you, would you call me on the ready, and I'll, and I'll look at it.
Are you, then you got twenty-two, as many as I need.
Well, he only asked for twenty. They used seventeen last year, but it's, 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 you know, I would say the twenty would be there. And they made a motion to twenty-five. Make sure you get it down. I made a motion to twenty-five.
Okay.
So we don't want anybody.
No, it was a twenty-one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All, all in, all the same time, motion carries. I'm, uh, twenty-one, the board should consider appointing one commissioner to attend mediation Wednesday, October the third, twenty nineteen, for the reading, team versus town, for complex, plan. Will anybody have the volunteer to do this? Come on, are you involved in this?
Yes, I am.
You know, it's already set to draw. I got a nice set to draw.
When did you get that?
Um, I'm not sure. I have to look it over and do it.
Okay, well, um, I post, the mediation is set for the thirty-first, I mean, thirty-first?
Uh, thirty.
Yeah, on Halloween.
I think exactly first of the week, and started in three, four months, the first of the year, set draw.
That's what I mean, the mediation is prior to.
Just call me and I'll let you know if you get the copy that works and.
It may be in my faculty, but let me just say this, there was a question about, um, when Mr. Russell was on, we went to mediation on this on EEOC, and of course, we didn't settle, um, and that's a cost that that they have to do prior to dispel it. Um, so this is one that's the thing that happened out of the, um, support complex. Um, and I requested that I be informed about what was going on on this. I think it's important for one of y'all to go to the mediation. I'm going to go to the mediation so that we can express our views, what we expect to have. Um, and like I said, it was, it was Mr. Russell that went for it. Um, and I would be glad to take any one of y'all, if you would go with me. Um, I'll go, nobody else.
Okay, um, is there a motion to appoint Commissioner Page to attend this mediation?
I'm going to go with the first, I think.
Okay, so a motion by Commissioner Murphy, second by Commissioner Page, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time, motion carries. Twenty-one A was the consent, I think the board should consider approval of contract for leasing of five hundred ninety-six plus a lot of acres of property for the harvesting of salt, salmon, and berries as attended by county administrator. I need your help with this item.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sitting right here looking for fourteen, but that was fourteen, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, I've got it marked here. I've got it right here, so.
Actually, a prayer call to the board awarded to this for the leasing of the property for the harvesting of salt, salmon, and berries to a local company, Diver, who is LLC. Um, that they committed to me and made a recommendation, um, bringing the paperwork. And then Tom Rad also prepared contracts, which was the item on the agenda. Um, a concern has been raised about allowing this contract, or I would say, to utilize a worker's comp exemption for this particular service. When the RSP was prepared, we basically met the, a very similar contract at the airport for the harvesting of hay. And so it was a condition in the RSP document that they either provide a worker's compensation certificate or an exemption if they had greater or less employees, and these employees must be listed on the exemption. I verified with Mr. Diver that there would be three employees actually harvesting salt, salmon, and berries. And I reached out to Board of Cities to our workers' compensation representative and explained the scenarios to him and asked him if he felt like that there would be a liability as far as any one of his workers being able to file a worker's comp claim against the county. And he indicated that he did not think so, but wanted me to verify with the county attorney. And this correspondence displayed yesterday afternoon. So that's the question. So the question is, if we accept a worker's comp exemption for the leasing of the property, and one of those employees is injured, if there's any concern as far as liability against the county, now, they also have a general liability for this. But the question is, could any of those workers file a worker's comp claim against the county? And the guidance I received from League of Cities was that they did not think that they would be successful. Now, a worker's comp, if they were successful, we do have worker's comp insurance that would cover them if they were successful in filing a claim.
Well, the question is, the question that you're asking me, can they buy money? You know, they bought money. You know, so the answer is, the question is, yes. Now, um, I can't answer whether they're going to be successful or not because I don't know the fact of your hypothetical. Um, and I was prepared, I didn't know about this until you just mentioned it. Uh, what I was prepared to do is to, um, to talk about the contract costs that, that we prepared, uh, on the contract that you'll look at. Um, and I do that now and then to come back to, to work on, okay? Y'all look on your packet of the contract, and I'll leave the contract price. Uh, because this is one where, uh, it was a little bit different how they, they get a contract price. The method of compensation, the method of contract price shall be the price obtained on the day of sale of the berries. The contractor will notify the county administrator, Mr. Alana Pemberton, on the day of the sale and advise the amount of the sale, gross amount, and will follow thirty-three and one-third of the gross sales to the county by check in standard. And. Um, those are my words, uh, because they, 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 you do it by, by the count. It's all one thing.
And I have, um.
Do you understand what, what, what I meant by that? Uh, the market was a dollar sixty a pound yesterday, when I checked on it.
I did.
So one-third of that, yeah, figure that out.
And, and I have worked out, um, a process with, um, with Mr. Diver, if he, if he does approve the contract or defines the contract, of how we will verify the number of pounds. And I leave him at a location, and they actually take it, um, form the worker to take the berries. Um, so we have that worked out. I did receive our comments from the state of Florida. Um, so that's ready. The, the only wrinkle at this point is if the board did not feel comfortable with, um, with this, with a potential contractor utilizing a worker's comp exemption. Unless, correct, uh, no, I'm going to just move on with this. The biggest barrier is the type of getting moving up. We don't need to not add any help with this, let's move on.
We're, we're going, we're going for the efficient, the drop, and all of it is not given.
That's not, we need to move on with this.
That's the purpose of the exemption, you know, the very nature of that is to allow us to be able to work. You know, and, and that's why we have these, you know, in fact, and, um, we're going to ensure, don't need more people out there working in the thirty, if you understand what I'm saying.
I have verified via email that there would be three.
Okay.
Now, I, I don't know the number of employees that have in their company, and I don't know the recourse if more than three people are working. Um, except that, you know, they.
We can talk about them later, okay? So we're doing, you know, you do this in good faith, and the time is going to, the board wants to go forward with it. Um, so we need, we need to move on.
I think that we don't need anybody to come and stop this process, we need to move on. And I believe that it's, it's, um, the nature of the, the location. It may be that, you know, it's something that we need to reconsider next year if the board decides, um, you know, we want a worker's comp coverage, then that, that certainly a topic for discussion. Okay, well, right now, is there a motion to approve this contract?
Oh, you, you're pretty strict.
Okay, without a motion from Commissioner Page, second from Commissioner Murphy, any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, and, okay.
You want to go back to the, um, the vote?
Yes, sir, I'm in number twenty. Are you ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Higher mass, I get. Um, the the vote was, um, just Sam Ridgeway to be the. And this is the ballot.
I'm going to.
The ballot's right here, and also my, uh, higher mass has been checked by the county administrator.
Congratulations, Bob. We trust you. I know you'll do a good job.
I'll do the best I can.
I know you do.
I'm confident. And I'm getting one too. Close a lesson, ma'am, close. You guys, close.
Okay, county administrator, I'm in number twenty-two, the county administrator to discuss informational items. I've got to do a motion and a second, so don't let me turn too fast. Okay, is.
Okay, is there a motion to appoint, uh, uh, Mr. Ridgeway?
I made a motion.
And for a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All votes same time, motion carries.
Okay, so, just to even, uh, to start with, you can resource this item, um, as you may recall, the board approved the document script for a part-time grant writer. We did, um, advertise that position internally and externally for approximately three years. We only received one qualified application, and that was for Miss Melody Cox. Um, she was offered a transfer and she had accepted, I'm very grateful that she will continue to be part of our team. Again, this is a part-time position, uh, she's no longer a department head, we will be making some internal reorganization. She'll be here, I believe, the first week in our head of worker's comp on-site training, and will assist us at that time with reorganizing, um, some of her duties.
I'd like to see us at some point in time, we did it, if we really need two people in that department, uh, we operated a long time at one, and now that that person doesn't have the responsibility of being super boss or other, be that, uh, be a, uh, veteran's officer in the airport and everything, let's, let's really evaluate whether we need that many people in that department.
And if you recall, that was, um, that was the justification for reducing that to a twenty-nine hour a week position, um, with, with the thought of reorganizing in your department.
We used to get along with forty, forty hours, one person with forty.
Yeah, um, just some housekeeping items as well, the, um, the tri-county annual meeting is Saturday, September twenty-first, at nine o'clock a.m. With the board likely to provide a notice in case there's more than one of you.
I want to.
Okay.
I'm making them.
Okay, so we'll put out a public notice. Also, on September twenty-seventh, um, it is the North Florida, North Central Florida Regional Planning Council Annual City County Manager Meeting. I have RSCP to attend, um, primarily to learn more about regional planning programs. I, this is of significant interest to me because of the directors and the board to, um, to research planning available, planning services available for our county as a least we have the area, so that will be my primary focus, and I hope to bring back some useful information.
Where will that be held at the moment?
That's at, at the Holiday Inn, they come, we, um, Commerce Boulevard in Lake City.
And I did refer, ma'am, what day is this month?
Twenty-seventh.
September twenty-seventh. Thank you, um, twenty-three, public, as a term from the public, from our general audit, if you're here and you wish to speak, you can come forward and send your management address and speak for three minutes.
Commissioner People, if I may, I'm sorry, I just noticed, um, Sister Baca, our marine agent, um, has come into the meeting. Does the board have any questions about the, the waterhead turtle program that's on the agenda?
I don't know. Hey, can you have the pictures of my sign, see that I can show the picture as soon as we're done?
Thank you.
Okay, anyone's ready to speak? If not, we'll go to twenty-four, board informational audit, Commissioner Moody?
Thank you all for coming. I thank, uh, appreciate the citizens of the county and everybody that we've got, uh, help. Appreciate the budget, uh, I know some of the folks that, you know, probably some things in that budget we don't approve of, but it'd be bad and nutritious to throw away a good package, because of one or two bad items, or four items, I would say. So, with that said, I just appreciate the corporation and the board, if you get something, I want to get enough.
Thank you, it's a big...
Sometimes we make hard decisions and everybody's not happy with it, I reckon that's part of, part of the game.
That's part of the job, yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Page.
Thank you everybody for coming. Second board for making steps, too, that's all I have. I appreciate everybody coming and, and I'm proud to see this rain that's up in this camera driving up again. And I know everybody is confused, it's nothing like it works, it's getting a lot better, uh, but we need to keep working on them, and that's about all I got.
Thank you. Um, last page is, like, Tom Lawley and Jim Paget was there, and we wanted to come and be sure and to thank the mosquito control for the good job that they've done down at the Ossilus River, so we'll pass that on to him, I appreciate it. Um, another thing, uh, I was, uh, I went by the Shady Grove Community Center last night, and I want to report that it looks really, really good. The ground, uh, it was, everything was very sticky, so, uh, my appreciation is thanks to the people that, that did that. Um, and what, what, um, Shady Grove, uh, Community Center, I did notice that there are no signs, uh, with the no baking that we recently done. So, who do you think that all our parks will have a no baking sign?
Well, that ordinance, um, has not been passed yet.
Well, we have a policy that...
But I am working with the Department of Health, um, have already reached out to them, and they have agreed to help us with paying for, um, as many signs as they can and are budgeted. They're very, um, they're very helpful, and they're very glad to see, um, this ordinance.
Good draft ordinance. But, you know, all the things that we're, that we're seeing now in the media about baking, uh, and I read an article this morning that, you know, some of the stuff is related to things, and it's just... I, I'm so glad that we've moved in that direction, that we, you know, put signs up and, now, what happens if you, if you stop people at the sports complex during a soccer game and they're baking and going at the whole other place? What, I mean, what is one to do?
I would say, don't stop them, you know, but you only want, let, let me help a little bit on this, um, how many, uh, how many drafts is that around? I've done about three or four drafts of the, of the, that's why I have some to do, because we're trying to get it to where what y'all really want it, um, so it's, it's gonna nap, in a sense, you know?
It has, and I only, I, can you explain to the board what we ran into with the smoking versus the baking?
Yeah, yes ma'am, I'm still standing, looking for your help.
Right.
Um, you know, there's, there's no smoking at a particular point, you know, we're calling it, we're not smoking, and, uh, we felt like that, uh, if there's no smoking, then there'll be no baking type of place. It shouldn't be a, a, uh, kind of a complex or a variance on that, and so that's what we were working on, to get it, so, uh, can't smoke, can't bake, can't bake, can't smoke, that's the worst, that's the worst issue, we should respect that. So, um, uh, I have sent this proposal, and I'm gonna copy it up to, um, to any mates, the end of last week, we can check the email on that, and then it'll be up for y'all to, um, to consider it, um, you know, we gotta advertise it, you know, we'll advertise it, you know, back to them. And I've read the articles about the baking too, a lot of shocking, uh, articles, and we've got the statistics of young folks using that stuff. I'll be honest with you, I mean, I don't get around on what these young folks, but I haven't seen them a while that I'm here, I don't know that, or even...
There is.
Is it?
And it was reported on the news, it was one of the show in Washington, you know, it was, uh, not in our county, not in our county, no.
Not in our county, but I'll tell you one thing, my little twelve-year-old that's in the seventh grade this year, came home a week before last, and said, you know, a boy was in the, in the boy's restroom baking, and asked him if he wanted to do it, he told me no, and the boy said, well, you should try it, you'll like it. So, this is, you know, my little twelve-year-old.
It's present.
So, we're, you know, and I was, we're talking a lot about children and, uh, these types of, you know, that can, it's typically hard.
So, just to clarify, and we, and if you want, you can put this on the agenda as a workshop, for the workshop next week, if you need to. But this ordinance basically states that if the, the, uh, public, any county building, no baking is allowed. And also, it's a specific area, which includes the sports complex, Anthony Springs Park, State Great Community Center are no smoking public parks.
And you've got the City Health Community Center, and...
That is not designated as a no smoking park. So, that's my, that's, that's where we kind of landed with this. Not all of our parks are no, are no smoking.
Well, we need to talk about this, you know, especially with the experience that we've suffered, if we're gonna be uniform and standardized or if we're, I mean...
There is one park, we, we do it all apart.
Yeah, we got children in all of them. Okay, well, the other workout agenda. The other thing that I, that I have is, um, how many mowing cycles do we have left?
Not in this current fiscal year.
No, no ma'am.
Because I'm making more weeks, we'll resume mowing, uh, Trevor, oh, uh, are you talking about our mowing, our, for the segment service?
Yeah, uh, yeah, as, as I'm doing, my, my district, I, my district needs to be mowed, and I know, um, some of my houses on top of triple, and I, you know, I have some loans where these people, the dishes are very big, and I went back by there yesterday, and, and some of it is very high, and these people, some of them are not able to get out there and do the dishes.
Okay, I'll tell you.
There's been some good about before when I asked to do it, I just noticed that it wasn't doing, and, and I noticed how the size of them, they are grown up, um, pretty high. So, as soon as they can, I'd like to get caught up in my district, I, I appreciate that.
In the act, you, Sam, the little dog's walking, going out for a run, you know, I got a request, yeah, that note too, that list.
Yeah.
That's sitting in there.
And, and that's, that's, um, is the county, I can get this, I believe, yeah, I believe that's fine, I'm telling you now.
You said the pantry on us to do dogs, you know, that's all out of two twenty-one.
No, 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 I have, but dog's market is running, you know.
Oh, okay, no.
That may be, that is fine, too.
That is, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Anybody else, honey, say?
One more thing.
Sure.
Law has come about hitting that we forgot to follow out that new building, that, that new building, make, make sure we get the following out, uh...
We didn't forget, um, they were just planning on moving it once the, that building was completed.
Building's completed.
Yeah, and, and it was, I talked to Open for a month now about, we're gonna reach out to Consolidated and have them move that point of demarcation, they're gonna pop right through the wall. It wasn't an everything.
We forgot to follow on, I said, I'll miss somebody, but we haven't forgotten, this thing we got too.
That's correct.
Anybody else, I got one thing, we have an issue about kitchen related, Justin Ford, how much, you know, their, their student, I want them to do the points today, Justin Ford, he knows that after the party, you cannot step back, at all, so I like...
That's right. This is now, uh...
And, and it happens, he's local, and I, I merge it, you know, you might have an issue, so you can't just, uh, listen to him at all. Good shit, someone may get a call, yeah. Anybody else, anybody? If not, uh, just a motion to a term.
I'm moving.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Have a good day.